If not, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes. Submit it.
I'm making motion that we approve the minutes as written.
There's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All those signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Next item, zoning administrators' report. Michelle.
Equine Meadows, I have not heard anything from them. They're still kind of stagnant. The Maverick One project is about ready to start. We're waiting on their letter of credit. The Premier Dental has decided they're not doing the addition they originally planned to do, and they're looking at other options. And the Patapsco 91, I heard from, and they will be on the May agenda. And that's all I have for you right now.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Alex, how are you this evening?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commission. Good to see you all. It's been a while. From the town side, water. Well, I'm happy to report that we're back into our green mode. Standard limitations apply. Mother Nature's been gracious to us and has refilled the coffers, as it were. So, we're doing very well with that. We just continue to urge residents not to waste water, but to keep it so we don't have to put, go back into those tighter restrictions. As you've all seen in the paper lately, the EPA has come out with the PFAS regulation, the final regulation. So, we have submitted our application a while ago for 6.5 million in capital construction costs to treat PFAS, and we were waiting for our preliminary engineering report on that to see how we're going to do. We hope within the next month, Rodney, to hear from MDE on funding.
That's our aim.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's our aim, yes.
Great. So, we're hoping to hear within the next month on funding as part of that capital project, and then we'll move forward with that. We're at the 30% complete for the ENR project. With that going through, we have a pre-submitting meeting to be scheduled for stormwater management on the site. Once that goes through, then we believe CDM Smith will be able to set the final building locations, parts where the trains are, the equalizer, and the new headworks facility, get all that set on the plan, on the lot, plot, excuse me, and then that'll really kick into high gear over the summer into the fall, where they'll start doing the final drafting, and MDE will sign off on that. We're continuing numerous work projects around town. You'll start, you're seeing now, we have the water tower getting repainted. That'll hopefully start soon, and one of our companies is around town fixing stormwater drains. So, that's all. We're fixing everything that needs to be fixed, as it were. Otherwise, everything else is going well.
Good. Glad about the water situation. I know a few months ago, there were grave concerns about what might happen if we had a dry March in April.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly.
That's good.
So, we're doing well.
Okay. Thank you, Alex. Council report, Chris.
Yeah, just a few things, Henry. First, we are, the board, or the council is reviewing applications for the Charlotte Collette Memorial Scholarship for our Manchester Valley High School seniors, so those are due effective May 1st. And there will be a public hearing on the FY '25 budget at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, May 14th, followed by the council meeting.
That was May 14th?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Now, to the county. Andrew, how are you this evening?
I am well, Mr. Chair, and you?
Doing well, thank you.
Good to see everyone. Just a couple things from the county. For water and sewer, the, we are finalizing the spring amendment. The Board of County Commissioners will likely hear the amendment in May, and that will be subsequently forwarded to the Maryland Department of Environment for further, for final approval. The 2023 Water and Sewer Master Plan replaces all previous plans and amendments. And then, the housing study. The Bureau of Comprehensive Planning, as I've mentioned before, is starting the housing study. This is one of the key studies for the upcoming Carroll County Master Plan update. We are on the final stages of setup for the website, survey, and community needs assessments meetings around the county. In the next couple weeks, we plan to work with municipalities and the consultants to finalize the meeting dates and locations in or near the eight municipalities in the county for an April-May timeframe, which will hopefully, will coincide with or part of events in the Manchester, Hampstead-Manchester area. The study is currently planned to be completed in the fall. The county planning consultant is Mosaic Community Planning. They will facilitate the meetings and all needed materials and supplies, and we hope that commissioners, council members, staff from the town are able to engage with us and the consultant in discussion of housing needs in the Manchester area. And lastly, that we're working through the 2023 Planning Annual Report, and thank you all for getting that report to me ASAP. I know I can, basically, it seems like every, every time, the town of Manchester is the first one who has their, their information into the county, so thank you all, Michelle, Alex, and Planning Commission. Thank you. And that is all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
I actually have one question, not really related to what you spoke to, but the legislature down in Annapolis recently passed the housing affordability bill, which sounded like there was a possibility that the state could override local zoning in order to allow for multifamily affordable housing.
I, I'll have to check with that, Mr. Chair. I know what went through was this affirmatively furthering fair housing, and...
Yeah, I haven't seen the final copy of the bill, but I know there was some concern in a number of local jurisdictions about whether this would usurp local zoning decisions if the state decided that it was necessary to provide affordable housing in a certain area.
And I'll check in with that, into that inquiry, and I'll email Michelle.
That would be great.
And, yeah, I have not heard anything like that, just that AFFH, afforded, affirmatively furthering fair housing, that's the only thing that I've heard of that's really hot topic in Annapolis with, on the housing side, but not superseding local jurisdiction on zoning.
Okay.
There was also talk that the governor was going to come out with housing targets for every jurisdiction in the state of Maryland in order to meet the housing shortage. Has Carroll County been provided with a target number yet?
I have not even heard that. The, I've not heard that come down or be circulated around the planning department.
If you can check into that, that'd be great.
Will do. Bob.
Any other questions for Andrew?
Andrew, I also watched, Maryland Department of Planning's been having these forums for accessory dwelling units.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
ADUs.
Yes. And so, I don't think that's finalized, but I've been following that because they're trying to make more than one unit on a lot.
Yeah, as a way of supposedly providing additional affordable housing.
Yes.
Right. And then the county worked on that about two years ago, got that through the planning commission for the, for ADUs. But, yeah, that's at one going, that's a hot topic, not only statewide, but nationally.
Thank you, Andrew.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the review of the concept plan for Patriots Overlook. Michelle, how should we do this? Should we have Mr. Hackett come up and make a presentation of what they're proposing, and then we can provide comments and get input from the public as well?
Correct.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Marty Hackett with CLSI. I'm also here with Mark Powers, the developer, owner and developer of the property. This project has been in front of the planning commission over the years through the annexation process. We have 36 lots being proposed, meeting the R2...
Excuse me, Marty, can you hold the microphone? Because it just doesn't carry or record.
Or I should talk louder, right?
I think I just prefer you.
Yeah, you're kind of back in that corner. It's a little hard to hear from people in the audience.
The, we're meeting the R20,000 zoning district. We did a conventional plan. This plan is not clustered per the annexation agreement, and we're here basically to answer any questions, as you may have, for the, for the property. It's served by public water sewer. It will require a pump station. We'll be working with, I'm sure, with Rodney on that, and I know there's a couple comments regarding the pump station. So, this, again, concept, we're at the very beginning of the process, that's for sure.
I guess I'll open up the floor to the commission members to make any comments or express any concerns they may have on the plan.
All right. I'm more than a little disappointed to see that almost the entire site is being mass graded. There seems to be little care and consideration given when it comes to tree save areas, even though a significant portion of the site today is forested.
And so are we, Bob. I actually sent a letter in several months ago requesting to meet with the city council to modify the annexation agreement with a clustered subdivision that had, that saved basically 40, 40 to 50% of the trees. And I was not given the opportunity to make the presentation, and I actually got a denial letter that they, they basically denied my request. So, anyway, just so you're up to speed on where we are. I mean, I thought we had a great plan, and I couldn't even get it in front of the town.
Also see that there are several areas within the plan that have what I will call community-based stormwater that's on private lots. We need to resolve that issue as well.
The, our proposal was the ESDs would be on, on the private lots in easements, and it would be maintained by the homeowners' association. There's no open space requirement, so we were just putting it on individual lots. I mean, obviously, lots are larger. You know, does the town, does the town want to maintain the, all those water quality facilities? And that's why, it's just a question I have.
I will defer that to others on that town decision, but it becomes a hindrance to the homeowner. They're paying taxes on a piece of the property that they cannot use. It becomes just a eyesore to them because they can't put a deck in there, they can't put a swimming pool in there, they can't do anything with it, they can't landscape it. So, we need, we need to figure a better way, maybe not all of them end up being 100% on, you know, common grounds, but right now, what we have is, in my opinion, going to be pretty problematic here.
Okay. Yeah, they, those particular facilities, we, we placed on basically the side yards. People normally don't build decks and stuff on the side yard, and these facilities are landscaped. I mean, they're, you know, they have more aquatic plantings and stuff like that, but, but they're, whether they're on a parcel of ground right next door to the house, it's still going to basically be their same view.
There, there's certainly issues both ways.
Right.
I don't disagree with you there. I think, you know, I haven't got my scale out to, to calculate it, but what slope is Patriots Court during the midsection?
Maximum street rates, 10%.
Looks like it could be steeper than that in places, but okay. Those are my initial comments. I'll have to go to my list for my other comments.
I'd just like to make a comment, with all due respect, Mr. Hackett, in respect to the Planning and Zoning Commission, the annexation agreement was based on there not being any clustering.
That's correct.
So, to come back later and ask for it again, that's, I believe, what is in the minds of some.
No, I, I understand. I just, after we got into the design of it and got further along, it just, it, it basically, the layout that we can cluster, the grading and so on associated with it preserved a lot of the trees, and I just figured we'd ask. You know, so.
Understand. Couple things I'll note. Open this up, but, use and common lots for five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10, that's six. It's not typical that we have that many lots on one use and common.
Correct. We, we would propose that we would make the, the use and common driveway wider, 16 or 18 feet. We talked about that.
For now, it's 12, I think.
Yeah. And we, we, again, we were, we've talked about it, and we're prepared to make it 16 to 18 feet, which will accommodate the, the traffic. We, we proposed it because instead of putting three off of one and then having a use and common right down the street with another three, we just put it off, all off of one to, to meet the, that land bay area back in the back. So, we, we can certainly accommodate it by, we put the private road in, therefore, it's no town maintenance. We could certainly put in a cul-de-sac, you know, with a, with a public road, but for six, six units, it's just seem to, instead of doing the two use and common driveways right neck to each other.
You know, we learned in another area what it's like to deal with some pretty massive retaining walls. I think there are seven large retaining walls, and one was seen very high, it was lot, lot 30. How, how high would that wall be? Because it looks like it's going to be right on the side yard of that home, and the last thing I want to do is look at the green monster 15 feet from my, from my deck.
That particular wall will be facing this house, not the other house.
Right. So, lot 30.
Lot, lot 30. Yeah, you'll be seeing the face of the wall by one of the...
Right, so lot 30 is in front of your deck and just see this big wall.
Yeah, we're actually...
How tall is that wall, based on that drawing?
The grades aren't shown on this particular drawing. I mean, it's probably 12, 14 feet in one area, something like that. I can check, but I don't, it's only by guess. We talked about actually tiering some of the walls. We would build them three to four feet high, tier them back, build them, and then that way we can landscape in front of them and all that stuff, and make them a real, real nice attraction.
Okay. And I guess with some of the steepness of the slopes, for maintaining grass could be very difficult, if not impossible. Is there something observed throughout?
No, that's okay.
Yeah, what, just, just to enlighten everybody, I don't have a scale in front of me. I'm looking at the rears of, say, you know, lots 20 through 21, all those lots down on, I guess, the, that end of the property. Those slopes look to be very extreme, even with retaining walls. What are we looking at, the average slope back there? Where did you grade those out at?
Most of the slopes are three to one slopes.
Because I'm seeing this 50-scale plan, and I'm seeing 10 feet of drop over, looks like maybe, maybe a half inch, maybe a little less. What do you have, Bob?
Some, some of the slopes that are in back, in some of the areas way back in the spot, we went to a two to one slope.
Lot 21 has a two to one slope that...
Correct.
Yeah.
Appears to need a bigger bench than the six-foot bench. Just double-check that.
Oh, sorry. Wait, go right.
Oh. Thank you.
Okay, and I guess the last thing I'll note for now is the drive, or the road to go where Seattle Slough comes into Bruin Court. Previously, it was its own road. Now, it's being shown as an easement across lot 35. So, I can't imagine, I think a road should be an easement on somebody else's property.
Yeah, there's an existing easement right, right now. They were done by off-convence, they're in the county. The, the houses are back here, and that road will be maintained. It's going to be basically relocated where the cul-de-sac's going to be, and it'll be, have a new location where you enter as you go back through.
Okay, it just, it appeared that it was on their property.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. It's now an easement, not its own road.
I believe there's an existing easement that takes you from Broham Court down through the property and down to Seattle Slough Way, which, it's all the way, but it gets modified in that location, but it's done by easement. There's an existing easement today.
I guess just following up on Councilman Wilder's concern about those slopes and vegetative maintenance, what were you proposing to do on those slopes? You know, if you've got a 20, 20-plus percent slope back there, I'm not, you're not going to see people easily getting back there to mow this grass.
Well, they, they mow two to one slopes and three to one slopes, especially the three to ones. The, the two to one slopes can be covered with crown fetch if needed. But as far as, we can certainly do that, but they, they are maintainable. They're, two to one's the max that we, we show.
News on some of the properties.
I'm sorry?
News on some of the properties.
That's correct.
It's kind of hard to have a swing set on that hill or...
And that's why a lot of, a lot of areas that we did, we actually extended the rear yard beyond the houses for more than what the code meets of 20 feet. We were actually, some of them are 30, 40, 50 feet off the backs of the houses.
Got a question about the bio swales. What's the lifetime of these swales before they need major maintenance?
I don't know.
And by maintenance, I mean just regular maintenance. If I'm a hairy homeowner, and I'm cutting grass and I'm throwing grass into that whole area there, into that bio swell, what's going to happen? When that fills up with water and overflows? Because I didn't maintain my property the right way.
Well, those bio swales will, will overflow in certain rainstorms, regardless of whether people put grass in there. They only ha, hold so much water for the first half inch or inch of runoff, runoff. So, depending on how they were designed, maintenance on the things, you know, there's, they, they get an inspection every two years or every three years. They'll get inspected by the county, and there'll be reports. As far as, you know, most, most of them have mulch in the bottom of them, they have their landscaping. Whether they're in an easement or on the, on property, if, if the town wants to maintain them's one thing. We were assuming that it was going to go to the homeowners' association, so the town didn't have to pay the expense to maintain them.
No, the town doesn't want to maintain them. I could probably speak for the town. That's kind of like a common sense thing. Okay, so you're, you're predicting the county's going to come out and look at these, and then take it up with the homeowners' association to fix them?
That's correct. Or the, or a property owner, however it's set up.
Can we refresh everybody's memory here? Are they bringing water in to the town?
No.
And they're paying the water replacement fee?
Correct.
Which is what?
14.5.
14.5.
14.5 per house for a lifetime of water? Okay.
And Chris, what we have done with the other, other developments with these bio swales, and Equine Meadows was one of them that we reviewed, they were on individuals, they were not on individuals' property, they were parcels that would be maintained by the HOA, same as we do with stormwater management bonds. They are a separate parcel. Some are owned by us, but they're all maintained by the HOA.
And some of them need some work. And when the HOA fails on it, the town's going to have to pick it up and fix it.
As we've seen in the...
And I can tell you about three of them right now that need some, some work. So, that just doesn't happen in real life. It's one of these unintended consequences, again.
Yeah, the only advantage of that setup is that the HOA has right of access to go in because it's the parcels that they're controlling versus going to some private property owner, and they say, "Look, we don't want you here." So, I think Bob's point was well-taken.
Do you recall the slope on Brian's Delight, sheer driveway? Do you recall the slope on that driveway?
I don't remember. Off the top of my head, I don't, I didn't think it was very steep. It would only be for a portion of it, maybe, then it flattens out on the, on the way back just because of the way the existing topo is.
Wells View is pretty flat, but Brian's Delight going the other direction...
I'm sorry, that, that particular one, yeah, that's, that would probably be neighborhood of 12, 13%. We try not to go over really 14%, even though maximum slope is 17, and sometimes 20% on these use and common driveways, that's, we try to stay away from that.
Yeah, it might be a little more than 12 or 13%. Just eyeballing it, looking at the 10-foot, I'm looking at that 10, 10, 10 contour in that 1,000-foot contour, and it doesn't look that much over 50 feet, quite frankly.
What's the slope of Park Avenue? Anybody know? Greater than 10?
You mean where it comes to pass, old, same parts?
It's over town.
Yeah, right, that spot there, right? That's not on here. Okay. That's what I thought. Just from a point of reference. Yeah.
But in my mind, a different impact, a slope like that on a road versus a slope like that in a neighborhood.
Yeah, I think no doubt snow removal is going to be a challenge.
So, we touched on trees earlier. What's your, your thoughts on tree replacement? How are you going to meet your forest conservation requirements?
Most likely be buying into a bank, a turnkey bank.
Which wouldn't be within the limits of the town of Manchester.
I don't know where...
It'd be somewhere in the county, but not in Manchester.
There's a good possibility, that's correct.
Yeah.
I mean, we could certainly plant some on the two to one slopes that we're proposing, create there, but I don't know that it will fall under the category of forestry.
Well, it depends on the width and the size. You can check with John Bowman at the county on that. It's typically 35 feet in width, 10,000 square feet in the area.
Right. Should I keep playing with it throughout the... Okay.
Any other comments from the board at this time?
Just one quick question. There's this little strip of land that comes off of lot 25 up... There's this little strip of land that comes off of Lot twenty-five up to Park Avenue. What is that?
I guess my.
Comes from twenty-five. Little strip of land comes up to, what is that?
That, that's just the property itself. It's not for any specific reason there. That, that's the existing property line.
But the way it's distinguished, I just, I was confused.
No, it's just the way they spurred it, probably to have a potential for road access out the park. Had frontage on the, on the road.
Driveway connection at some point.
Yeah. Anything else, Bob?
I guess my, my, I've got a lot of, a lot of thoughts. But my last comment for tonight is just a reminder that the annexation agreement is for up to. Does not require that number of lots, so. And I, I understand that in order to make deals work, you have to maximize everything to the best possible. Something to consider.
Michelle, is there anything that you, Alex, or Rodney want to add at this time? I know we've got written comments from Rodney on this. Kind of been passed along, but I didn't know if there was anything else that.
I gave you a statement from my office. I'm going to put it in writing and I did.
Yeah. And you gave it to Mr. Hackett.
Yeah, I had concerns. I just, I had concerns with the retaining laws. We see them all the time out in there in Halle and Dehorable. And, you know, they put these chain link fences on top of them, but when the homeowner wants to put one in their backyard, they can't do it to match up with what they got in their yards. I just, I think it's a very poor design.
There's, and you pass those comments along to Mr. Hackett, so he has those.
One other thing, I'd like to see some kind of connection like we did out at Starlight, Mitch Form Seven, that connected back to the other neighborhoods. Because if these people are going to be isolated from the rest of the neighborhood, possibly some kind of sidewalk that goes from Patriots Court to Rome Court. Since we don't have sidewalks on Park Avenue and the kids would be, I just think that's something to keep in mind, too.
Rodney's nodding his head, so his comments have been made, so unless you have something else.
No, sir, did Marty see my comments? Carolina Services?
Yeah, he should have.
That's not these, correct?
They were mailed.
We, I'm sure we have them then.
Yeah. Let us know if you don't, Michelle, email them to you.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
We've got some citizens who have signed up to speak. There's a Ms. Rebecca Strong. Could you please come up to the mic? Thank you for attending.
Okay, so I am, I'm the person who lives right in front of the water tower on Park Avenue.
Okay.
So, and I've been there for, I guess, it'll be, it's twenty-nine and a half years, so I've been there a long time. I have just some general questions. I do have, you know, a copy of the, the plan and everything. How large are the lots? How, about how large are each of the housing lots? Okay. And what is the size of, of the average size of the home that is going to be proposed? In other words, what are, what are the, what are we talking about? How many square feet?
Twenty-five, twenty-six hundred square feet.
Okay. Okay.
We might find some in there that are going to go larger.
Okay. And I, I missed some of the part about the water source. Where is the water coming from then?
Unusual.
Okay.
It's a unusual supply. You're talking in the existing system.
Okay, okay. Which, as a Manchester resident for a long time, is not a really fabulous system for water. In other words, we've had problems with water for almost the time, the whole time that I've lived here in Manchester. What about, is it, are they going to be septic?
Public sewer.
Public sewer, okay. What is that impact for the, those of us who are not on public sewer? And that's probably more for the town than anybody. But I guess that's, that's a concern.
Well, honestly, that really shouldn't impact you at all since they're going to be tying into the public sewer system.
Okay.
It will have no effect on your septic fields.
Okay, okay. I just don't want to, as a homeowner, I don't want to be forced to have to go into a public sewer. And I've heard in other situations in other areas, not necessarily in Manchester, of that sort of thing happening. So I'm perfectly happy with my tank in the backyard, so.
Well, if I add one other thing, as long as your system is working.
Yeah.
You do not have to connect in. What we've done in other cases is we've required an easement and in some cases even a line be installed. As a backup system so that in future, should you need to install, connect, you could.
Okay.
Without having to go through and acquire a new easement.
Okay, okay. A question for, for also, I guess the town and everything is, are we going to be able to handle the water for thirty-six homes that are, you know, bigger than my house? I mean, that's again, the water tables. We've, we've had problems with them in the past and I know people have had well issues in that area down on twenty-seven. You know, so I guess that's, that's a big concern for me. Is, the entrance is just going to be the one on Park Avenue close to Brightview? Is that the only entrance that's going to be on there?
All of Park Avenue for one cul-de-sac and then the other entrance will be an extension of the existing.
Oh, from Broad, Broadham, okay, okay. I guess the other concerns I have is the fact that we're, we've got, in my view, larger homes. Because mine is under two thousand square feet and it's a four-bedroom house. My concern is that we're putting thirty-six houses into an area where, and again, there's another development going in down at the bottom of, of Park Avenue as well. And then there's another one off of Route thirty, is my understanding. So there's lots of development coming in here. And again, this is more for probably the town than anything else. But traffic is already miserable getting off the bypass and coming through Manchester. How is this development as well as others going to impact traffic and everything else? And how is that going to be managed? That is a huge concern for me. There's accidents in front of Walmart all the time, all the time. And that's just going to increase. So I guess that's something, that's just a thought to bring up. I mean, I, you know, and again, this is more for the town, I suppose, than anybody else. I guess the other piece is the school system. We've got two elementary schools, which is great, that may be able to handle all this. North Carroll Middle, I can't imagine managing any more students, nor Manchester Valley. And then I guess the other piece is just the, has, has there been any information on the environmental impact? As, as somebody who is very concerned about that piece, you know, we've got a lot of road, more roads coming in. We've got more buildings. We've got, you know, a lot of stuff coming in there. And I, you know, has there been any, you know, has anybody taken a look at the environmental impact of thirty-six houses going in? What's actually, what's the acreage of that? What's the whole acreage right now of that area? The total acreage of the. Seventeen, okay. Okay. Okay, that's pretty much the only comments I have and questions I have and thoughts to ponder.
Where would you, I could help you answer some of your questions. Where would you like to start? Because you rattled them off pretty good and I didn't want to stop your, your mojo going.
You, you just pick, you, you can pick.
So the water supply. We're well within our MDE yearly allocation. So we look at that prior to when the development starts to come in and it was looked at prior to this annexation plan. The reason we did what we did, we had a dry spell. We have wells that get to a certain point that it requires us by our drought management plan to take stricter conservation efforts. So we don't have a problem of losing water. I will say that right now there's some discussion on changing the gallons per day in a home. From, from the figures that we use strictly because people, there are more water restrictive fixtures in newer dwellings. So that's that. Does it say it's always going to work? No, if we hit another patch where we did this past year where we had a dry winter and the previous dry summer and spring, we'll be right back in the same position regardless of those homes are there or not.
Right.
So that's the best I can, and again, it's our job in the town to look for continuous water sources that can help bolster the town's supply. But we have to do it in a very deliberate, strict, MDE regulated way. So it's not something that we can just snap our fingers and pop a well in the ground to start making it a production well.
Okay.
Okay, so that's water, traffic. I really don't have a good answer for you. Having lived in that area my, just about my entire life. Okay, I remember when we got one car a day coming through. You could ride your bike, you could sled ride, you could walk in the middle of the road and throw rocks. I, I don't know what else to tell you. The problem we see in the town is that Old Ford Schoolhouse Road to Park Avenue was used as a bypass around Main Street.
Yeah.
And that's just something we have to live with for right now. There is a great deal of development in South Hanover, in, in South Central Pennsylvania. And a lot of those folks come back to Maryland to work.
Yeah.
And that is a huge problem, as you very well know.
Yeah.
Schools. As of the beginning of the last month, there was an adequate facilities look from the school system. Our end of the county is in nowhere in their five-year capital plan to be overcrowded. How they get to that, I really couldn't tell you. I don't know, I'd like to know. But as it stands now, none of the schools in this area will be overcrowded as they foresee it in the next five years.
Even with, even with some of the developments that are.
Well, you know, again, I don't know how they developed that, but they certainly, the school board gave it to the commissioners that way. So I certainly hope they did their due diligence because they just told our elected officials who run the county that they're, we're good.
Okay.
For the next five years.
I think they usually take an assessment of the properties and the zoning and determine how many houses could ultimately be constructed and build out over a timeframe. And then they, they determine whether you have capacity.
I know.
They, they look at a migration rate from grade to grade for each school. And they look at the feeder patterns for each school. Then they have a calculated rate for a single family would generate this many in each one of the grades. So every time an application comes in, they have to be tested, make sure we stay below the thresholds. If we would go over the threshold, then only a portion of a subdivision could be approved. Or the school would go into moratorium and no house is being built. But that is controlled by the county and we just have to abide by what they say.
What they direct.
Yeah, but that's, that's what I was going to lead into is that the adequate facilities law would prevent us from issuing building permits if the schools were over capacity and couldn't take students. So as Bob said, you might have thirty-six home subdivision. If it was determined that there was only capacity for four homes, that's all they could do until the situation was resolved.
Okay, because I know Man Valley, a number of, a couple of years ago was like overcapacity, like they were, they were pinched. And it was probably maybe like five years ago or so, but they were.
I don't know. I, I, Man Valley's always been very under capacity by state school standards.
Even after the merger, they should have been below capacity. I don't recall that.
Yeah, I think they were below.
My kids were gone before the merger.
They were close.
Yeah, yeah. And then Alex, I think the other question was on sewer. And again, it's the same thing that.
So sewage treatment plants, they have a million gallons a day. We can process four hundred thousand gallons by regulation. Again, we keep that well, we have, the figures are well within our hands and we're fine.
Right. Now, question for, for you again, because I, I know the Equine Meadows development is down at the other end of the street. And that, I guess, that's already been approved as well? In other words, that's rolling through, okay.
That's been approved.
And that's what?
It has concept approval.
Okay.
It is still working on off-site stormwater management issues with the county. So it's kind of in limbo, I think is the best way to put it.
How many houses is that again?
I believe that's also thirty.
Thirty-two, I think.
Thirty-two, okay.
And you had a question about traffic. We've been requiring recent applicants to do a traffic study. And you go in order of approval. So this would compound on top of any other applications that are in. So when they look at the roadways, they would be adding those as background traffic, assuming that they were already there and built.
Okay. Yeah, because one of these days when I check my mail, I'm going to get, I'm going to get taken out. It's horrible, it's horrible. I've like begged every policeman I've seen in Manchester, can you please just come park up there like you guys used to? Because they used to come and just park on the, the Water Tower Road and they just sit there and pull people over. And now, like I said, it's, it's like the Indy five hundred. It's, it's crazy, it's absolutely crazy, so. I think that's it for me. I appreciate the time, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strong, we appreciate your input. Michael Stensel?
Good evening, planning, is there any committee members? My name is Mike Stensel, I live off of Seattle Slough. And my lot is. Which is kind of the lot that was, well, it's kind of like peninsulaed in. Two, two years ago, when the annexation process was happening, I attended a lot of the town council meetings, planning and zoning committee meetings. And I was very vocal against the attempt by Powers Homes to annex these into the city. When I bought my Powers lot, we stood at the end of it. They said we would eventually build and these are county lots, so it'll be one, one acre plus lots. And it's kind of what my wife and I were thinking about. I came to the meeting to discuss how we create a peninsula of my county land against all the city land. One of the things I really agree with is what Mr. Graham said about the tree issues and tree conservation. When I bought my lot from Powers Homes, they said it was a wooded lot. And now the wooded area around my lot is all going to be gone, I hope. When we stood there at the end of my lot and they said, my land goes twenty feet and these trees will always be here, I really hope that that was, that was accurate. On the evening of the annexation vote, Powers Homes showcased their preparers plans to the city council. I, I guess I have a question. When did you guys get this concept plan? It says January twenty twenty-four, I think, on it. Did you guys get it around then or have you had it much, much longer than that?
No, that's when we got it.
Okay. So, and.
Because it was originally supposed to come on the docket in March, but we didn't have a quorum available.
Gotcha, so on that annexation vote night, they proposed two different plans that they had. One of the plans was for if they did not get annexed in. I brought both of the plans, I have them, I saved the pictures of them, I'm happy to pass them out to you guys. And there was county lots. And for me, and I was a very vocal opponent of the annexation, there was county lots. If it, if we weren't going to get annexed, there was going to be a lot here and a lot here and some other lots like throughout. And then what they had said, if they did get annexed, there was open space against two sides of my house. So this whole almost back quarter was going to be open space. From what I understand, it was going to be something to do with water or water management or something of that nature. I, I have both of those plans and I can show you guys, I kept them, I'm a pack rat, I keep everything. When I got the, when I saw the sign in the, the ground. I was able to go and see this plan a couple of days ago before this meeting. Because I guess there's a technical review in Carroll County. And I was very shocked to see not a ton of open space behind my lot. Pretty disappointed in that. I know Powers Homes showcased their plans not only to me, but really to the town of Manchester that night, saying this is what it was going to be. And that's what the town of Manchester in a sense voted on, say, "Yeah, we're going to annex. These are the plans that we're annexing." I don't know how it works coming up with concept plans and concept reviews. I'm not a builder. It kind of feels like the plan that they showed me was, I don't, I don't know. I don't know if it was to make me less vocal. It was, I don't, I don't know if I can read into that. I don't want to read into that. I hope it wasn't something like a bait and switch. I don't like, I don't like that. I don't like feeling like people would do something like that. But the plan, this plan is very different than the plan that the city of Manchester agreed to with the annexation. I kind of, I, I really appreciate how thorough you all have been tonight, asking questions. I thought that I was going to not have to come to these meetings anymore because I thought the annexation plan was kind of going to be similar, at least, to what I would have been looking at tonight. But it's pretty different. I was hoping I'd be able to stay home and, and not have to come to these meetings, but I, I guess I'm going to kind of keep coming and kind of making sure. Things that I'm very worried about is like what you were talking about with the retaining walls that are right next to my house. There's a big slope from my house coming down, so I am worried about the drainage or the water that'll be coming down. This is kind of like definitely a big hill going that way. So when they put in these, these lots here, which I did know these would be city and I did expect it, but I am worried about the idea of that, that drainage coming down into my house. Because it is a steep embankment. It's not like really slow. And if they're getting rid of a lot of the trees, then I worry it's not going to suck up as much water as possible. I know I talked more, I think, than I asked questions.
That's okay.
I'm happy to share these plans if you guys haven't seen them. I just, I wish I knew the answers and how things changed and, you know, why, what I thought was going to be a lot of open space, you know, now is houses, so. Thanks.
Can I see this?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Sorry, I'm a little nervous.
Just the annexation. Yeah, there, there was a gentleman who just says Tom and then didn't sign a last name.
They gave him that night. That was going to be if it was...
Pardon me? Oh, okay. If you can come up to the mic and state your full name so we have it for the record. I just thought you might be like a celebrity or something and just went by one name.
No celebrity. My name's Tom Stone. I'm a resident at 2747 Manchester Road. My house and my, my lot, my five-acre lot connects directly with the proposed property development. I had some questions and some comments I just wanted to throw out and see if I can get a response from the... Are you the surveyor developer? Is that what your title is, your sir? Okay, thank you. So were there in any environmental studies put forth yet or is that pending?
It'll be pending. We're going through the, it's just concept. We're going through conceptual design and preliminary design and...
Will that include aquifer and permeability studies for the soils? Is that part of the study?
It'll be doing soil gourging for the stormwater management.
Okay, okay. Where are you in stormwater management submittal process? Is that taking place for the concept plan or not?
It has.
Okay, where, where are you in that process?
At the beginning, at the concept.
Okay. Have you met with MDE there reviewing your plans at this point or?
No.
Okay, okay. The trees save, looking at the lot, it really looks like from the site, it looks about three-quarters of the trees would be taken out at least. To do earthwork in there, there's not enough room to be able to do what you need on the slope and retain in the old trees. There's trees in there that are, some are about 60 years old, some are less than that because it has been, you know, abandoned for many, many years. My concern is environmental concern. There's a lot of birds that nest in that area that won't nest in areas when the trees are taken down. There's a, there's actually three families of barred owls in there now, which is not really usual. And they really love to have these mature trees. Baltimore Orioles, we have some on our property and we've seen them in there before too. They only live in the mature tree stands. So there's a real concern, I think, for the community that some of those trees would need to be saved and, and selecting them and have spacing between them eliminates the canopies. So you won't have nesting of those kind of birds in there any longer, unfortunately. I'll get to this, I'll talk about this now. So part of my concern is with all the imperious spaces, the square footage, I don't know what the count is on that. And you do have some areas, the ESDs, that will grab some of that stormwater and control it and relocate it, you know, down to where it's supposed to go, to the lower areas and to stormwater management areas. But you're going to have runoff that's going to go through the baffles and be dumped out through the outfall. And you're going to pick up pollutants that are normally going to be just consumed by consumers. You're going to have road salt, pesticides, herbicides, fertilizers from lawns. You're going to have all that going on. You're going to have people using pressure washers for the cars, their siding. You're going to have those contaminants that are going to get into the street, into the stormwater management areas and they're going to have to, it's going to have to be recharged. I guess that baffle, the big section at the bottom of the hill, is that a recharge facility as well with the baffles in it?
That would be the quantity facility.
That's right here?
Correct.
Okay. Can you, can you explain how that functions?
Um, that, well, it's, that's going to be to handle your two and 10-year storms. It will have a retention rate and it will dissipate accordingly over about 24 hours.
I'm sorry, anything? So does that recharge as well? Does it recharge into the ground at that point or does it collect it in overflow?
We're, well, once we run the, get the infiltrator test and all that, we'll be able to tell exactly what the recharge rate will be. We just, at this point, we just make an assumption right now and assume that we're storing everything. But yeah, we might as well at the beginning part of the process.
So that was my question. I guess I just wanted to know if there's a recharge facility there or if it contains it, some evaporates. And so if this is a recharge, that's my concern too because the soil in the area is very permeable. So after we get a decent rainstorm, our wells come back up again. It's amazingly a quick response. So I know that anything that would go into the recharge or out the outfall would be immediately introduced into the aquifer. We have, we don't use pesticide, herbicides on our property at all for that reason. We don't have any well filters or things of that nature. We drink our water right out of the well. I mean, we have, I think, a carbon filter for drinking water, but it's, it's clean water. We have it tested every other year or so and so it's, it's really unmolested water. It's really a great source. So I'm very concerned about that with all that washing down into that area. And it's going to affect everybody else as well on 27 because it's all the same aquifer. We answered the water source. That was interesting. I was really surprised there's enough water to provide the sources for your new development. So the sewage, the pumping station, I didn't see it on the drawings. Where is it proposed at this point?
The cul-de-sac is up at the top of the page. You'll see it off to the left there. It's just showing a box.
Up here? Oh, top of the page. Right here, yeah. So it's down, it's down at the bottom of that cul-de-sac. You're pumping all the way up to the top of the hill?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there lifting stations too or just the one pumping station? Okay. So one, one other comment I want to make on the, on the collection, the cumulative effect of all of the pollutants is that there's been several studies done in Maryland and Carroll County with the wash off of road salt for, you know, winter, ice, the... And it's had a really terrible impact on reptiles and amphibians because they use the, the small shallow ponds in the spring to lay their eggs and they develop and they become mutated. They don't develop properly and they die. American toads, faller toads, spring peepers, gray tree frogs, spotted salamanders, red efs. There's a bunch of different species that, they're, live right here in our, in our backyard, in our area. And then...
Are there, do you know of any vernal pools that are in the area?
So yeah, in my yard, I have, I have three springs on my property that are the headwaters for Little Pipe Creek. And there's, there's two spring-fed, they're small little pond areas, but in the spring, they're, they're packed with reptiles, amphibians.
Primarily peepers and American toads.
American toads. There's also spotted salamander, gray tree frogs.
Because typically if, so they're isolated ponds because if they're not typically spotted salamanders and wood frogs wouldn't, wouldn't breed in a connected system. They need to be in a totally isolated vernal pool.
Well, these are actually, they overflow into the drainage because they're actually spring-fed, so they are separated from it.
Okay.
Yeah. And so the, the back of our property is a seasonal drainage area. So right now it's running relatively strong and then of course in the summer dies out. So they're, they're long enough for them to breed. We also captured one time a spotted turtle, which is very unusual for that area. And we let go, of course, we documented that too as well. So there's some unusual species back there. There's some, some regular species also as well, but I just want to make the point that it's a very vibrant area for production and natural species back, back there. Timeline on the project. So if you were to continue the process now without any restrictions, where would you be as far as, how many years would it be under development until it's actually, properties are being sold?
Probably about 24 months.
Okay. Let's see, I'm almost done here. I promise. Thank you for being patient with me. I think, I think that's it for now. I appreciate you letting me take some time and give you my comments.
Well, sir, I was looking down at the map when you, when you first stood up. Where do you, where's your property in relation to this?
I do have more questions, if that's okay. I'm right here.
He's off, he's by the stormwater management area.
Okay. So if I could ask one more question? So for the outfall, for the, the line that runs from your stormwater management facility, it's proposed to go across my property and the outfalls be supposed to be on my property. I don't know how that can happen without coordinating or some kind of, some kind of organized permission with the owner. And some, I don't know how that works, but I'm concerned about that too because everything I talked about as far as the affluence running off on private property and into that area down to Pipe Creek, that's the headwaters of the creek. You're still going to have those suspended contaminants in the waters comes out. So that's, that's a serious issue in my, in my opinion. And so the question is, how does the developer go about organizing or working with private property owner for access to their private property and permanent use?
Well, it looks like based on the plan, there's a 20-foot recorded drainage and utility easement that already exists in that area. It's listed in, looks like it's in the plot book in the Carroll County tax...
So is that for the benefit of a private developer selling houses or is that for municipalities and other sources of government sources?
Just listed as a drainage and utility easement, so.
So are there restrictions on that?
We would need to pull the deed and confirm.
Yeah, we'd have to pull the deed and see exactly where.
Who has rights to it.
Maybe that's the follow-up question I could ask you. That'd be great. I can give you my contact information afterward, Donna, is that all right?
Yeah, that's fine. Appreciate it.
Your time, appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Powers, you signed up. Did you want to speak or you just signed up because you thought it was a sign and sheet? That's what I thought. Okay. Anybody else on the board have anything further to say in this matter? Oh, okay.
I didn't sign up.
Okay, well, come on, come on up and, and give us your name and, and your address. Get, get to the mic, please.
So my name is Christine, can you hear me? Christine Van Anzie. This square right here is my house, my property.
I see it, okay.
So we're bordered by this community on, on...
Two sides.
On two sides. Yeah. And so somewhere along the line, I, I'm sorry, I didn't write down the name of the person that said this, but the, the retaining walls that they're proposing on this plan, we're going to, we're going to see a 20-foot wall from, from my back patio, which I believe is right here, which is, is, that's, that's a little frightening. You know, we, we like everybody else, we bought our property with this lovely wooded land behind us and we've known, because this has been going on for 24 years, that something was going to happen, but prior to the annexation, those were going to be one acre lots. And prior to this plan coming out, which, you know, we just saw recently when we got the postcard about the meeting coming up next week, there were going to be two stormwater management facilities in both corners of our property. One here and one in that corner to collect all of the stormwater that was coming down the hill. Because the way the grade is right now, and I realize that they're trying to make changes to that grade, but the way the grade is right now, this comes straight down to our property, that comes straight down to our property. And when we have a large storm, and I have, and I've submitted photographs to the county, when they last disturbed this property to do surveying, they came in with bushhogs on the weekends. And I don't know if that was prior to this developer or if it was this developer, but when that happened, we got one of those gigantic storms and we had two inches worth of muddy water coming across our property, which I was able to photograph and provide to the county. So we have had contact with stormwater management and we were under the understanding that that was, that wasn't ever going to change, that those two stormwater facilities were going to be there to protect our property. We also, right now, we do have, along with Tom, that utility easement. We were told by the county that that cannot be used by a private developer, that they can't come across that, that area. I do know that four people were on my property last week without permission. And I don't know who those four people were that were on my property looking in my backyard, but, you know, I have a small child who, you know, from time to time is out in my backyard without mommy and daddy holding his hand. And that's troublesome because I think if somebody's going to come on to your property, because it's the easiest way to access the land and to look at the land, that they would at least maybe announce themselves, call in advance, let somebody know that they're going to be there. We were told by our, by our exterminator that we had people on our land. So that's, that was troublesome. We were at, we were at school on our way home from school when that, when that took place. So thankfully, my son wasn't at home at the time. So we, as, as Tom said, we are very, very, very concerned about the stormwater. Very concerned about the stormwater. And only today did we realize, you know, when we were looking, we had seen this plan, but we, on the county, I guess there's another eight-page document that shows the, the walls. That, I, you know, it's not a Home Depot. This is my backyard. I don't want to look at some giant retaining wall in my backyard. Or I don't want to see some giant 20-foot hill in my backyard that can't be maintained, can't be cut, that's going to have long grass, you know? And I, I understand that you all just said, someone along in the meeting today just said something along the lines that if the HOA fails on managing the, the areas that are going to be left for them to manage like stormwater, the stormwater facility, that you guys are going to pick up where they fall short. Because if that's not in place, I mean, is there going to be some sort of bond put, put in place so that we're protected? Because our septic is right here. So this water is coming right across our septic field. If it, if it outflows on our property at that corner, it's coming right across our septic field. Our two wells, we have two wells.
Yeah, I see those. They're right in the corner there.
Right. So we have those. And, and again, you know, like, is all that stormwater, you know, coming off the roofs, coming off the roads, coming off the cars, going to now be into... into, into my drinking water? I can tell you for sure that if it's not properly treated, it will be in my drinking water, because we made the mistake when we were city folk coming to the country, we went and put fertilizer on our lawn and we could taste it when we were showering. So, we know for a fact, if anything is, gets into that aquifer, that it's coming into our home. We've seen it happen, we've never done that again, sorry, Tom. Um, we didn't know any better, we were young and we thought, oh, this is great, we're gonna have green grass. So, um, so I'm concerned that we had one acre lots and now they're down to, well, let's see, we've got from eight all the way through till 16, all of those houses border my land. That's a lot of houses, when it was supposed to be one acre lots. Um, I don't know how we fell off, we were on the list with the, Michelle, I'll need to give you my info again. We're not getting emails anymore, so we were unaware of the whole thing that just happened where it was annexed into Manchester, because we're not getting the emails anymore, so I'll have to just double check with you, make sure that we've got the correct information, because I've always been here at these meetings, and I haven't been here because I didn't know that had just happened. Um, the tree conservation, I think Mr. Graham said something about the tree conservation. There are, well, just last week I counted 20 deer that were in the land, like, let's say 50 feet off of the border of our, of our house, so maybe like right about here. So, we do have a lot of wildlife up there, um, currently, and, um, we also have a natural spring that pops up about halfway down this border of our property that also feeds into Tom's yard and the Little Pipe Creek. So, I guess I just want to make sure that-
Does that spring up on the northeast, up in the upper right corner of your property as we look at this drawing?
It's like halfway down this property line going that way.
Yeah, because I'm looking at that, there's a kind of a natural swale, topographic swale, which would be probably the low spot where the water's coming out, so, okay.
And I'd like to back up just one sec too, to that, to that easement that's there, just to bring it to your attention, that when this first happened, the, and again, I apologize because I don't know if you all were the owners at the time, but the developers that were working on it at the very beginning of the project did come to us to ask us for access to our land so that they could do stormwater, um, in return for some bushes. So, we thought, well, that's probably not what we want to do, because that seems like a pretty unfair trade if what you're trying to do is gain access through our land for a little bit of landscaping. Now, I just, I just, you know, it, it just felt as though we were being preyed upon, and that's, that doesn't give you a comfy, comfy feeling, it doesn't make you feel good when there's a bait and switch. So, thank you. We will try, I'll give Michelle my information again, and we will try to be here from now on.
That's fine.
Because this is really going to affect us greatly. I think we probably have the largest, um, linear footage of land touching this property. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is my husband Eric, he likes to talk.
You're welcome to come on up.
Kind of taller, I can reach higher.
Yeah.
Hi, Eric Venanzi, 2733 Little Lane, um, this is our property. As Chris said, we have probably the largest linear feet touching the adjacent property or proposed. Um, can someone explain to me what their interpretation of this pipe is? What does that do?
That's an existing drainage utility.
He wants to know about the pipe.
And there's a pipe now underneath there, or going to be. There appears to be a pipe or a hard line written there.
That's gonna be, that's gonna be the outfall for that stormwater management facility.
Underground?
Yes, and then it'll have a discharge point where it'll come, it'll daylight.
It'll daylight?
Yes.
Between Tom Stone and my property, there's gonna be daylighted pipe?
Yes.
24-inch daylighted pipe?
Correct.
And then the eight inch that's even below that one or something?
Uh, no, there should just be a sink. Well, I didn't look at the cross section, but there'll be a daylighted pipe there, yes.
Mr. Bob, do you have the full eight pager and not this one pager?
Yeah, I have a full package.
Page seven of that, and I don't know if we could put it up here, because it's much more in-depth.
We don't have it all, we don't have that, that media.
I, I got it from Westminster site.
We did, the county site and down there, I think that was necessary, so I just got that.
Because that shows the contour lines of what they are proposing and the Kohl's slash Home Depot retaining wall, that, that's all we're gonna see. And it's 40 feet high on one side and 50 on the other, but yet the stormwater management area is gonna be 40 feet below. So, what I'm saying is they're cutting all of this, dropping it on this side to build it up, then there's this retaining wall, and then the stormwater area at relatively as low as my property. So, my septic field is here, my septic tank is here, and then we go up, what are the contour lines on this one? Two feet, four feet?
They should be two.
Two? So, then we go up, two, four, six, eight, 10, maybe, maybe 10, 15 feet, over a stone wall, and then we're gonna have the proposed stormwater area, then a massive 20, 40-foot retaining wall, level land here, and then another retaining wall up here, because they took the dirt from here, plopped it on this side to build that up. When you do that, I think it may be difficult to dig a foundation on new soil, let alone, they're clearing everything. So, the layers of the soil are now different. As Chris said, we have had two inches of dirty water flowing over our property. We are, I would say, 70% downhill from every contour line from the top of the hill. Some of it goes off, some of it goes off, but we're in the target. Okay, so back to the daylighting. Private business, town, sorry.
No, no, you're fine. No, you're fine, you're fine.
You're getting your steps in today, yeah.
I need to get my exercise.
You're getting your steps in.
Um, the easement has been there, we saw it on the plat for our lot, um, but it was our interpretation that it's for, well, the county. Not necessarily Manchester, but you are a government entity, and they are not. So, are you guys and gals able to just come in, play eminent domain, dig up what you'd like and put in there, outflow, daylight onto our property, in order to benefit a contractor or a private entity?
Well, as Councilman Graham explained earlier, we'd have, we're gonna have to pull, pull the deed to that drainage and utility easement and see what is permissible in that easement.
Would that deed say Carroll County?
It may, it may say, it may-
Westminster?
It may say something like that, it may be as general as this 20-foot drainage and utility easement for the purpose of conveying stormwater with no, no limitation on who uses it, but we don't know that till we pull it. And that's not that uncommon, actually. So, we can't really answer your question until we, we, we get more details on it. We understand your concern, but we have to find out what's actually going on with that easement.
And when we say daylighting it, like you said, you'll see a 24-inch pipe coming out?
Yeah, with usually a stone apron at the end of it to dissipate velocity, and then, in theory, it's supposed to sheet flow from that point.
And that's like the runoff from the stormwater management area?
That's the stuff that would not infiltrate if, if they are able to determine that they can get soils that infiltrate. The smaller storms will infiltrate into the ground, there'll be very little, if any, discharge out of that pipe, and in the larger storms, facility would fill up and it would drain, drain out that pipe.
Overflow their properties, overflow the stormwater management area, and then come onto my property and just dissipate the rest of the way?
In theory. Every 10 years.
Okay.
That's, that's the truth, that's how it's calculated.
And-
For a 10-year storm.
Were you aware that earlier properties, or maybe it was an earlier developer, was asked to put a stormwater management area on this side and on this side?
I'm not sure. I think that, there's facilities on both sides there.
I don't see a facility here, I see these little eco-bio areas?
Microbioretention facilities.
Which I think someone said at a half-inch worth of rain, it's already, that's enough, it fills it up.
It depends on the facility and the area that you contribute to it and how fast it's infiltrating or not.
Yeah, there are microbios there, the quantity facility is that one facility, we have it being piped over to the one facility.
And, Mr. Bob, in page like five or six, there are the, that, showing the microfacilities here?
Yeah, there's microfacilities running down the center spine, and then there's the larger facility that borders your common property line.
Okay, so as Chris was saying, that our wells are up here, we were city folk, you moved to the county, yay, green grass, you fertilize. I don't want to assume who the people move in here, but they're on city water, city septic, they may not care less about people who are on wells, but it will affect our well, guaranteed, with whatever pesticides, Tom, or keep their grass green. These microbioretention areas, is it kind of just like a little swale in the ground? And then, they're not allowed to put anything on it? No, no sheds for the homeowners?
No, because it'll be, they have to vegetate it with native plant material to help with the nutrient uptake.
But not necessarily a fence around each one? Like a-
Yeah, that's correct.
They're, they're 18 inches deep, basically.
Okay, so, again, Mr. Bob, the page seven really shows a massive amount of landscaping being moved, and these contour lines are extremely tight, both here and here? Is the land gonna be contoured of that 40-foot difference, or is it a giant Kohl's, Home Depot retaining wall?
I don't recall any of the retaining walls being that, that high. I think the one was 22, 24 feet. I can check, and I'll be happy to do that, and we'll look into that.
You have page seven?
I've got the whole page, but-
Could you just count up? You don't even have to count, there's, there's numbers on there.
It's in sort of profile, however, the 2 shows the greeting, and tentative greeting is 30 feet from the stormwater management facility to the houses on the private drive labeled Wells View Drive, 30 feet.
And then from here?
Call it 40, you can see this high line up here.
So, there's 30 feet on one side and 40 on the other. You referring to height?
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, sorry, just making sure I got everything.
That's fine.
Forget anything?
Um, just the, if there's gonna be any blasting that's gonna take place to shore that land, how will the houses and the facilities be protected if that's the case?
Pretty rocky soil.
Pretty rocky soil. Will there be seismic monitoring or crack monitoring levels?
Yes. I was joking, you're actually gonna, could actually blow up some stuff?
We have to run the boring, we have to do boring yet and all that to analyze the rock, we don't know if it would be something that you'd have to blast or we'd have to rip it, we don't know that.
I'm surprised you guys didn't know that.
If you're, when you're doing that, sorry, when you're doing that-
Common sense.
The boring and those sorts of things, what kind of protection are you gonna put in place?
Especially in Manchester.
Like, are you gonna have, like, they didn't have-
Ms. Venanzi, if you're gonna speak, can you come up to the mic as well, please?
Sorry.
No, that's okay, we just want to make sure that this all gets recorded.
So, I'm just curious if they're going to be doing those boring samples, because they did do something, um, I don't know what it is, all I know is that whoever did it left their materials on the property, it's like gray piping or something, and it's right where Lot 14 is. Somebody came into the land at some point in the last, I don't know, maybe two years, did something and then left all their materials there, um, in, on the, in the wooded area. But my question is, I guess, while you're doing that, the research for the property like that, will you be putting any sort of protection barrier up? Because when we had that stormwater problem the last time, it, all they did is bush hog, not the big trees, but bush hog the ground cover. So, will there be something before you guys even start that will, you know, some sort of sediment fencing, or I don't know what they call that, to protect us from that runoff?
It's gonna depend on what, if they have to bring in a full-size braver, it's a smaller device, they could do it. So, Andrew, I don't know. As far as placing cell fence along the property line or something, do that something? We can provide some cell fencing along there.
Is the, I, I know the plan well enough now, is the stormwater facility, the facility that's capturing the bulk of the water, is that an open facility or is that a closed facility? Like, is that an open tank or an open, like, storm, stormwater pond, or is that a closed tank? Okay, so nobody can, like, so my son can't decide that he's going to be-
Indiana Jones.
Indiana Jones and climb into it. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, so, all right, that was it. Sorry.
That's fine.
Sorry, it, it just, you know, it's really difficult. I don't think anybody here wants to be in the position that my husband and I are in right now. I don't think anybody would want to live in that, in, on that property. Truthfully, if we could get out right now, we would leave, because this is gonna be a giant mess, and it's going to, it's going to damage the value of our home and everything that we've put into it for the past 24 years. If they're not super careful, we're, we're gonna lose our, we're gonna lose our investment. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else have anything to say?
Come on, you talk.
Please state your name for the record.
My name's Keith Register, live at 2627 Manchester Road. I'm here with my mother, who lives next door to me. On the map, I live, my mother lives here, and I have 10 acres on this side right here. I guess what I'm concerned is, we've been here 45 years now. Over that time, well, basically what we've come to live with is that this happens to be one of the highest spots in, in Maryland. It, it has that phenomenon with the, the weather coming in out of the west. You get storms that hit this, and then you get flash floods, like, that run down off the side of this. The only reason I'm saying that is, is that we have videos that show that. One time, in fact, the last time it happened, the houses that run down along this, this stream right here, and go down, there's houses that are in front of my property that are between 27 and the hill, which is basically the aquifer where the, the springs come out. They basically had 6-foot of water. My neighbor in the front just lost his entire downstairs. I tried to get him to come here, but they, they don't want to make, you know, problems or anything like that. And I, I think it's a safety concern. So what happens is, the water just runs off the, the streets coming down here. The other problem is old Ford House, old Ford House, old, you know, the, the road I'm talking about. When they, when they took and did the drainage there, they just took the swell, ran the drainage out, and it runs right down the hill right here also. The two of them, what I'm worried is, is that if you take all these trees out that are currently here, you're going to double this issue that they have, and we're going to see more flooding in that area. So it's all those houses, it's where the salt dome is down on 27, it actually becomes a lake out in there, because those, those driveways are basically stopping the water at that point. So I know my house has, has been there since 1794, and I know they've lived with that issue for a long time. That's what I was saying, the, the last time I was here, I was saying, it's an issue, and somebody really needs to look at this, and it's going to affect the houses and the, and the aquifer, or the, the drainage down further, for those houses that are currently getting flooded. And really, that's all I really wanted to say, that it's, this issue is going to go beyond, you know, what we have just here, and affect these houses right next to the And like I said, we have videos, you know, for you, you know, if you'd like to see anything, you know? Sometimes it looks like a, just a waterfall coming down, you know, off the side of the hill.
I mean, if you want to share those, you can make those available to the town, and then they can just share them with us.
Okay.
If that's possible.
Is your mother's property, was Kathleen?
Yes, yeah, that's Kathleen.
Just trying to get our orientation. Yeah.
Oh, and can I ask one, Alex, are you, are you the paracoon that lives right here?
I am.
Oh, nice to meet you, I've always wanted to come up and say hi.
I don't know why. Thank you for your comments. Anybody else have anything to say?
Can I just say one thing? You can be up there, too?
Yes, I do.
I only have one second, I'll be right there.
Take your time.
Okay, I'll be, I'll rush. Okay, my name is Kathleen Register, I live at 2699 Manchester Road. How come, has anybody thought about all the traffic that's going to be on that road? I mean, you're going to have 72 cars just in that one development. That's a lot of cars, and there's always accidents up there. Okay, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all the public's comments, and I can assure you that this board will take everything under serious consideration. Any other business from any of the board members that needs to be considered at this point? If not, I will ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
You have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Meeting is adjourned.